Jerem. Stothard, who is not here quite yet, Thompson. Festerson. Garnett. Gray. Mr. President.
Please rise for our pledge allegiance and remain standing for invocation.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For our invocation today, I've got some words of inspiration from Dr. Martin Luther King. Let us rise up tonight with a greater readiness. Let us stand with a greater determination, and let us move on.
City Clerk's certified publication on Daily Record on September 14th, a note for a pre-council and regular city council meeting September 18th, 2012. A current copy of the Opening Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law, may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage a debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. Mr. Clerk.
Councilmember Stothard is in the chambers. Ordinance on final reading, Ray Bonds, item number five, supplemental to ordinance number 36738, authorizing and providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $13,500,000 special tax revenue refunding redevelopment bond performing arts project series 2012 for the purpose of paying all or part of the cost of refunding and redemption of the city's special tax revenue redevelopment bonds performing arts complex Douglas Street Heritage Development Project Series of 2004.
The public hearing on this item was held on September 11th, 2012. Roll call.
Jerem. Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson. Festerson. Garnett. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed seven to zero. Zoning ordinance on final reading, planning board attachment, take items six, seven, and eight together. Six is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the major commercial corridor overlay district to incorporate into that district the property located southwest of 144th and Arbor Streets. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Seven is resolution to plat entitled Georgetown Replat. Six is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And eight is a subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
The public hearing on agenda items number six, seven, and eight begin now. Are there any proponents?
Dan Dolezal, Airheart Griffin Associates, 3552 Farm Street, we're the civil engineers and surveyors for the project representing Discount Tire. I'll be brief in my statements. Discount Tire is a national firm with over 800 stores entering the Omaha market for the first time. This represents their second store. They have a store that has a billing permit approved for the retrofit of Blockbuster at 78th and Cass. They have two more stores in the line, and you'll be seeing those cases come forward in the next month or so, as well as looking at other sites. They've been a great client to work for, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Jerem. Stothard. Thompson. Festerson. Garnett. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number nine is ordinance vacating Abbott Drive right away, located north of Dodge Street and east of 10th Street. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
The public hearing on agenda item number nine was held on September 11th, 2012. Roll call.
Jerem. Stothard. Thompson. Festerson. Garnett. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
The ordinance is passed seven to zero. Item number 10 is resolution of the preliminary plat entitled Copper Valley, located southeast of 168th and Fort Street alone. Attached conditions hereby accepted in preparation for final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 10 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Afternoon. Jason Thielin, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street in Omaha. On behalf of the applicant, be here to answer any questions for you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Jerem. Stothard. Thompson. Festerson. Garnett. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda items number 11 through 14 should be laid over for two weeks. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda items number 15 through 19 should be laid over two weeks for publication and public hearing. Liquor, item number 20, Salmon Louise, New York Pizzeria, 5401 North 155th Plaza, Class I liquor license. No application, no location. This is an annexation.
Public hearing on agenda item number 20 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Joe Griffith, Sir Griffith, Sean Griffith, owners of the business.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Jerem. Stothard. Thompson. Festerson. Garnett. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 21, The Corner Bar, 3824 Q Street, request permission for an addition to the present class C liquor license of the Sidewalk Cafe, approximately 18 by 22 to the north.
Public hearing on agenda item number 21 begins now. Are there any proponents?
James Lor, co-owner of The Corner Bar, my wife.
Kaylor.
Thank you. That's okay. Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Come back, folks. Mr. Garnett.
Could you tell us the reason why you're here and what you're applying for?
It's just an extended liquor license to the outside. We built a smoking patio a while back, and now we would like to have the customers go out and have a cigarette with their beer on this patio.
Isn't it a fact that the reason why you're here applying for it is because you got caught?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Good. I was by your facility over the weekend four times, and I noticed that you have, you keep the doors open on the front of the business and the back of the business, allowing the noise from the inside to escape out into the neighborhood. Is that a practice that you can stop?
Oh, I can stop it, yes, sir. It's just that it's so nice we just let the bar air out instead of keeping it cooped up. But if that's an issue, it can be addressed.
What about the parking lot over towards the north? You've got some foliage that's over there that seems to be somewhat out of control.
It's been, okay, yes.
Has it been challenging?
Well, when the heat, yes. And since the heat broke, I haven't had the time to get out there yet. I do plan on that, yes.
Okay. I mean, it won't take a notice from the city to get you to do something with that?
Oh, heck, not at all. I don't need no notice. I couldn't do that, sir.
Has that been made aware to you prior to today?
Oh, my goodness. When was that? About three, maybe three or four years ago? I had gotten a letter since it got out of hand, yes. But recently, no, not that I'm aware of.
You have a manager that works during the day and then a different bartender at night? Is that accurate? Are you there most of the time?
It's usually me.
It's usually you?
Yeah, or my wife.
Okay. How long have you had the place, folks?
Six years.
Six years? Okay. I gotta tell you, I'm not comfortable in approving this.
Okay.
I saw some things when I went by there. I heard some things when I went by there. We do have a letter of opposition on file.
What's that mean? I don't understand.
From some concerned neighbors. And I worry that maybe what you're saying here to us is not actually transcending into actions back at your property. But I'm glad that you did. I was prepared to have a little bit of debate, but at least you owned up to the fact that you're here because you got caught.
Yeah.
One of the three requirements that we sort of look for, I guess you could call them criteria, is the basic skills and the ableness of the management and the owners of the property to do what is right, not only on the property and exhibit that you cooperate with, you want to be a good neighbor, you want to be a good corporate partner, and have some willingness to demonstrate the type of management that it takes to be just that, being a good neighbor, being a good corporate partner. What worries me is the fact that you built the patio, you allowed alcohol consumption on the patio without a permit for how long?
When did we put that in? Two? Two years?
Three years.
About three, three years ago.
About three years ago?
Whenever that no smoking ban went into effect, sir.
Just after that?
It was just shortly after that.
Yeah. Okay. That still bothers me. Two out of the three criteria here that I'm just not comfortable with. I'm only one vote out of seven, but that's all I'll say for now, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
I've got most of my questions answered by Mr. Garnett there. And, Mr. Garnett, do you have a recommendation, sir?
Mr. Thompson, I was considering at the time if we did have some lengthy discussion regarding the reason why they were here. I was going to make a motion to deny, but I reconsidered, but I still would, I still have reservations about this particular applicant and this application.
You want to leave it up to the rest of us?
I, yes, I would.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Second.
Ms. Stothard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think most of my questions were answered too, but I just have to ask you again to explain just a little bit more about the issue that you confirmed after Councilman Garnett asked you, is the reason you are here is because you were caught. So how long were you serving liquor outside without a permit? Did you say for three years?
I wouldn't say three years. Help me out, two?
So for some time? For some, okay. And you realized during this time that you needed a permit to do that? You did realize that?
I did in a way. I wasn't 100 percent sure, but duh, come on, yes. Bottom line, yes. I did it without permission.
So if you weren't caught, you wouldn't be here asking for the permit?
Not necessarily. Okay, time back, oh, about eight months ago, I'd submitted it, and brain fart, and I forgot all about it, so I had to resubmit, and that was before I got caught.
Okay.
That was, I got eight months ago, nine months ago, maybe a year ago.
And you're the liquor manager then, too?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. See, what concerns me is, as the manager, and you're the owner?
Yes.
That your job as manager is to make sure your business follows all the rules and regulations of the law. That's your job as manager.
Correct.
And when you stand up before us and you tell us that you were aware you were doing something that was against the law, and you're only here because you were caught, it really leaves that open for me to think, are there other areas that you are not enforcing the law? And that's really a concern to me, and it should be a concern to all of us, because we should take who's the liquor manager very seriously. Because, I mean, there's a lot of problem establishments around, and so when you admit that you have been operating and selling liquor outdoor, knowing that you should have had a permit, that really concerns me. So how can you tell us that you will assure us that you will be a very responsible manager and that you will make sure that people that visit your establishment will follow the law, and you will make sure that they do?
How can I convince you?
Yes.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
I'm there pretty much all day long. I will change things if that's what you're asking.
No, that's what you must do. I mean, you must make sure you follow the law. I shouldn't be asking you to do that. I mean, as liquor manager, that's your job. That's your duty and responsibility, to make sure that the law is followed. I shouldn't have to ask you that.
Understand. It will happen.
Have you ever taken a certified liquor management class with the state?
Never heard of it.
You've never heard of it?
I'm sorry, no, I haven't.
Okay. All right. That's all my questions.
What is that? Mr. Jerem.
Yes, have you been cited by the Liquor Control Commission to go down to Lincoln regarding serving in an unlicensed area?
No, I've never got a certified letter to go down to Lincoln? No, sir.
Yeah, to the Liquor Control Commission.
No, sir.
So who was it that caught you?
State Patrol. State Patrol. I don't have the copy with me.
When did that happen?
July 5.
How do you know that?
I just remember that.
July 5.
All right. So whether that's in the works or not, you don't know.
I don't have a clue, sir.
Okay. So if I can summarize here, you built the deck about the time the smoking ban went into effect. You kind of suspected but didn't know for sure you needed to have this premises expansion licensed but didn't, and continued to use it until you got caught, haven't been trained as managers or servers by the Liquor Control Commission, and you keep your doors open and disregard your neighbors and the noise that they experience because of your establishment. I'm trying to figure here some reason why a reasonable person would conclude that they should vote for you here, but what I think you should do is withdraw your application at this time to give yourself some time to establish to the council member from your district and to this city council as a whole that you actually have, you know, reasonable training, experience to understand the laws, and, you know, you really probably should have that being in the business anyway, but as I see it today, if you want to go forward, that's your choice. I don't feel comfortable that you even know what you're doing. So I would suggest you consider withdrawing it today and maybe coming back in a few months where you can demonstrate some things to us that you've done to show how serious you are about the serious responsibilities that come with owning and operating a licensed establishment, but it's your choice.
This. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Councilmember Jerem asked the questions that I was going to ask and made kind of the summary that I was going to make, but the question I do have is, is there some time constraint for them having to get a license or having to be before this council today? Do they have time to do what Councilmember Jerem suggested and still be operating legally up until that point?
Buster Brown City Clerk, they have a liquor license. This is only an expansion outside.
Okay.
If they were to withdraw it today, they still have that outside area, they just can't serve out there. People can go smoke. They could take the liquor training course that the Liquor Control Commission has online and show to the council that they're serious about wanting to do this and reapply later.
That would be my suggestion as well, that you reapply. Get the liquor control, get the liquor training that you need and then reapply. I guess I'm not sure with the State Patrol, what they did, if you still haven't, if you still have some issues that you have to settle with them. Not that you're aware of?
They didn't say anything.
Okay.
Councilmember, you could also, if you want, there's no timeframe on when we have to do this. You could lay it over for a number of months, weeks, if you want, or...
I think it probably would be better for you to withdraw than reapply.
That's fine.
Okay?
Is that what you're...
Yeah, we'll do that.
This course, I'm sorry. I've never heard of this course. You get it online?
Yeah. Tomorrow, give me a call.
All right.
Mr. Thompson. Are you requesting a withdrawal of your application this time?
We'll withdraw.
Okay.
Based upon that, I need to go back to the councilman's district. Mr. Garnett, do you prefer going on with the vote, or do you want to go with the substitute motion from Mr. Jerem?
I appreciate all the input. I just want to remind everybody here, they've been in business for six years. And not knowing about a course, not knowing what follow-up is when a Nebraska State Patrol investigator pays them a visit and notifies them that they're in violation? This is a pretty big shot glass to swallow here.
Well, Mr. President, I think there's still a...
Draw my substitute motion.
This motion is second on the floor.
They can have it come back another time anyway.
Yeah.
So the motion on the floor?
Currently, the motion on the floor is denied.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Gary seconded.
Mr. Garnett. Your lights on. Do you have anything further to comment?
Nothing further. Thank you, Mr. President.
It's all right. You sound uninformed and disinterested, to be real honest with you, and that's not a, that's not a good indication from somebody that has a liquor license, so. No further lights. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
This is denied, right?
This is not, yes.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's denied on seven to zero.
Okay. Thank you.
Item number 22, Immaculate Conception Church, DB Department, 2701 South 25th Street, request permission to appoint Carol Podrowski manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number 22 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Michael Heavy, Carol Podrowski, and Father John Bransich.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, seven to zero. Item number 23, Indian Oven, 1010 Howard Street, request permission to appoint Benoy Fernandez, a manager with a present class I liquor license.
Public hearing on agenda item number 23 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Marie Fernandez.
Benoy Fernandez.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Stothard.
Thank you. Mr. Fernandez, are you the liquor manager?
Right now, I am the general manager and co-owner of the Indian Oven. I'm not the liquor manager.
You're Benoy?
Yes.
Okay. I need to ask you, you have a citation in 2008 for a DUI?
Yes.
Okay. Can you, again, I'll ask you the same questions that I did the other gentleman, is, as liquor manager, your job is to make sure your establishment follows the rules and regulations of the law, and you have broken the law with your DUI. Tell this council how you run your business, and you can assure us that you will make sure the business follows the law.
We currently, we follow policies that if anyone comes in that seems inebriated, we refuse liquor service to them. If in the process of drinking at our establishment, they are, they seem to be getting past the point of control, we cut them off. My bartender has in excess of nine years of bartending experience in managing bars, and we're leveraging that experience as well. I carry security at my doors, especially late night, to make sure that the premises are protected and secure.
What have you done personally? I mean, you're not setting a very good example if you got a DUI.
Yes, and everyone makes a mistake every now and then. I have not had any citations since then. I've taken, I did take courses to address any potential problems that might be going on, and...
Have you taken any of the liquor management classes that are certified by the state available online?
I have not at this time.
Would you be willing to do that?
Yes. Yes, I'm actually looking at courses right now.
All right. I would move to approve contingent upon him taking one of the certified liquor management classes with the state.
Second. Mr. Garnett.
Mr. Fernandez, since you've had a contact with law enforcement, in the unlikely event an incident took place at the Indian Oven, which required police service, can you assure this council that you would be cooperative with law enforcement at the time that they would respond?
Yes, I can. The restaurant itself has been around for 28 years, and it's always been in my family that entire time. The Riverfront Patrol, we have a very good relationship with, and I've actually spoken with them in the past, should, when we've had potential incidents arise up, that best ways to contact and to handle those situations, and they gave me the advice, and all my staff that works late nights have been given, been instructed what to do should something occur.
And you probably are fully aware, Bob, the security guy that works down there?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no second, I would second.
Yeah, we have a second.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, seven to zero, on the condition. Item number 24, resolution that the Amazing Pizza Machine at 13955 S Street is hereby released from the promise made to the council that liquor sales would be restricted to private pre-booked event groups, and is recommended that the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission also remove that restriction as a condition of the liquor license.
Public hearing on agenda item number 24 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Alan Walker, Amazing Pizza Machine, and Mike Alicio with Amazing Pizza Machine.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Stothard.
Thank you. Are you the owner or the manager?
I'm a company vice president. Mike Alicio is one of the co-owners.
Okay.
I have a quick summary that might explain a little bit of where we've been and how we got to here.
Sure, I'll ask you, because this is in my district, and it's a little hard for me to understand, because this is a place that obviously attracts kids.
Yes.
And I'm sure it attracts teens as well, and I know originally it was for private pre-booked events, the liquor license. It does concern me that you're wanting a liquor license because this is an establishment for mainly the youth.
Sure. You know, as a refresher, the Amazing Pizza Machine opened to the public six and a half years ago, August or April 28th, 2006. Shortly before that, we came before this body and asked for the liquor license, but with the restriction to serve to private events only. At that time, we were the new kid on the block, and the concept of a 60,000 square And at the time, when we came to make that request and ultimately receive it, you know, our primary response was to address the request that we knew we would receive from companies and groups doing private outings, and the way we do that now is we serve alcohol in, if requested, in areas where they reserve the event, typically a dining room, or if they rented out the whole facility, we could serve throughout the facility, but we have it in localized area. You know, from that time on, we've always trained our staff well and take our service of alcohol very seriously, and our record so far, thankfully, has been squeaky clean. Since that day, we've received numerous requests from our guests to say, why don't you serve alcohol when they come in with their family and have alcohol available on any day? The existing license and the restrictions that we opposed, we imposed upon ourselves created, unfortunately, inadvertently, some confusion in the mind of the customers about when alcohol is or isn't available. In the most common example, guests who order a beer during their private event are sometimes confused why they can't have it on another day when they visit with their family. And the confusion can come even from those who are visiting us for the first time, especially guests from out of town, guests who visit a bowling alley, other family entertainment centers in the area, or even movie theaters these days are, were able to order a beer or a glass of wine, and those guests find it strange that we don't offer the same beverage unless they booked a private event with us. And they see us as a similar entertainment destination, and they expect to be able to enjoy a beer or a glass of wine when they go out. And when enough guests ask, and do so in an economy where every guest is important to a business's success, we listen, so that's why we're here today. We're asking to remove that restriction. But to your point, if there's concern about the service of alcohol to a wide range of ages and in a very large facility, we simply and enthusiastically assure you that we know we're a family entertainment destination and would never even consider making this request if we thought for an instant that this change would distract in any way from our appeal to adults groups, and most importantly, families with children. If granted, we would continue our training process. We have and expanded much wider to all of our restaurant staff. We train with the nationally accredited program developed by the National Restaurant Association for Serve Safe of Alcohol, and we would continue to be vigilant in all we do to maintain our reputation and our spotless record. We will always plan to offer one dining room that has no alcohol in it all, and the other areas would be closely monitored with things like wristbands and ID checks so that it would be clearly visible to anyone who's allowed to have alcohol and who is not. And no alcohol would be served in the arcade portion of the facility, so it would be limited to the dining room area of the restaurant. Unlike some other destinations where you would truly be able to walk and take that alcohol anywhere, we're focusing it on the food service aspect of the business. Remembering too, we're owned by Nebraska businessmen with vested local interests in the community and local reputations to maintain. That's why Mike is here today out of respect for the application process and how seriously we take this request to remove our own limitation. And so, in simple terms, we're asking to be able to do what comparable restaurants and entertainment destinations in Omaha markets can do now, offer to the alcohol to the public during general operating hours, and pledge at granted will waive, of the waiver of our own restriction that we'll continue the commitment that we've demonstrated the past six and a half years to serve both responsibly both to the letter and to the spirit of the law and maintain the family-friendly experience. Did I touch base on...
Yes, you did. So let me, let me just clarify. So you have specific areas where you will be serving the alcohol?
Correct.
It's more of a dining room area?
Yes.
So will there be a bar in there then, or it's just where you will be serving food?
Right. We have, we have portable bars and, and the op, the flexibility to do service at different beverage stations. Our facility wasn't originally laid out for that, so we're redesigning and retrofitting it to serve that. But anybody that's going to buy alcohol is going to have to have a wristband. They're going to have to already be ID'd, and like I mentioned, there will also be an area where they'll, where they'll...
And that's something I think you will have to be very careful about.
No question.
Because there will be, there's always a lot of children there. There's always a lot of teens there, and I'm sure you are going to have a lot trying to get served there also. So you're not going to allow, though, if they buy a beer or a glass of wine, they have to stay in the restaurant area? They can't go walking around where the go-karts are and stuff drinking their beers?
That's correct. You know, we're, we're a little over 60,000 square feet, and the restaurant portion of our facility, including the kitchen and all the other fun stuff behind the scenes, is about 20,000. So there's a pretty simply, simple demarcation line. We enforce that now for, you can't take any beverage into the arcade right now, and so that certainly we continue with.
And you, anybody that, tell me again how you're, anybody that wants to buy alcohol, you will check their IDs and you will wristband them before they can buy?
Correct.
Okay. And have you thought about any extra security since you're going to be serving alcohol?
We'll certainly monitor any of the activity that, that goes on as soon as we implement this. We, we actually, as, even when we do private events and we have large groups, we actually sell very little alcohol, but it's a, it's a, every dollar counts. And so, in those examples where we've had a large number of folks and they've had the opportunity to purchase alcohol, it's never been an issue in the past.
What do you...
Certainly, we're committed to doing whatever it takes.
What are your business hours?
We open every day at 11 o'clock, except for Saturday, it's 10:30. And then the Sunday through Thursday closing time, right now is 9 o'clock. Goes a little later in the summertime, but, and then Friday, Saturday, we close at 11.
So alcohol will be available to be purchased during all of your, your business hours then?
And we, and as a reminder too, we don't just let anyone come into the facility. You know, our, our basic price, we have a basic admission price, and so being a teen hangout is not really, we don't experience that because teens are choosing where they spend their money, and so when they come here, they come to play.
So you have an admission price just to get in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. All right. And have, will your, you said your servers took a training course?
Accredited by the National Restaurant Association.
Accredited by the National Restaurant Association. What about any of the training courses offered that are certified by the state of Nebraska?
We've completed those as well. The man, the designated managers, facility managers that are actually working today have as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Grenat? Here's the example of the exact opposite of item 21. Six years in operation with self-imposed restrictions, squeaky clean, a plan, someone that's, has, that pays attention to what's going on. Just amazing. From one end of the town to the other.
We try.
Thank you for your operation, what you do out there.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Grenat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's approved, six to one.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed. Consent agenda shall be taken up by city council merely following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 25 through 28 were held on September 11th, 2012. Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard? 25 through 28, the ordinances.
Consent agenda.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Grenat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
They're all passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 29 through 38 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent.
You have someone who wants to...
I'm Frances Mendenhall, 3715 Hamilton, and I'm here about item 37. I want to thank everybody on, on the city council and everybody else that did all the work to save public access for the people of Omaha. I consider it a valuable resource that should not have been just thrown away because Cox nearly succeeded in starving it to death in times past, but that's history. I'm here to say to you today that I think having done all that work, it'd be a real shame if somehow in the implementation, it was allowed to still be kind of tacky or not as good as it could be, or somehow fail in Omaha. So I want to offer you two thoughts about what you should accomplish in the implementation of public access. There are now, I don't know how many, but a bunch of, of TV shows that are call-in shows on Channel 22. There would be similar kind of live call-in shows on the public access channel that's available to everybody free, but Cox got in the way. That needs to happen. So in order for that to happen, I think, we need to have a studio all the time, continuously. So at, at the point where there's no longer any studio at 114th and Dodge or at Channel 22, there needs to be something else that is a studio that replaces it. I hope you won't let that Omaha tradition die. It's alive and well, and it could be even better than it is if people didn't have to pay to use it. Second thing I want to ask you to accomplish is to look at the bigger picture of what public access, access is for. I hope you agree with me that the reason why we, we the public want it and you, the public servants, want us to have it is in the service of democracy. Information is the lifeblood of democracy, and TV is how most people get their information. Therefore, I hope you will look at not just whether people can get in front of a microphone and reach the audience that happens to be tuned into that channel on Cox tonight, but whether they can get their message out by using TV in conjunction with all the other things that people need to use to get their message out, specifically YouTube and, and the social media on the internet and chat rooms and the whole digital spectrum of communication. I, I think that to do less would mean that, that public access is, you know, 10 years from now, when you'd be able to look at it, or anybody who wants it to die would be able to look at it and say, huh, we knew it wouldn't work, and sure enough, it didn't. It needs to be a complimentary way of getting the message out. Therefore, what I would like to ask you to include with your studio that you provide for public access users is internet access. Good internet access, high-speed internet access, that people can upload things onto YouTube if they make a really hot video or something that they want to share with the world. I, and again, I appreciate what you all did, and I certainly intend to use it. And any questions?
Thank you.
What? On the re, yeah, well, yeah, on the regular tier. I, I thank you for that. What else did I forget?
Public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson?
First of all, thank you, Frances, for working on this. You've been a trooper, and you've been working on this for about 10 years, or if not longer. And so I've definitely have followed your, your advocacy over the years. And, and I'm hearing your message, the whole idea of call-in ability, the need for studio, information going out, and in fact, you broke it down in terms of an expanded curriculum and technical access issues, and so, but we, we have to make sure that everybody understands what's going on here today. What, we, we will have some influence on those things that you asked, but we are, we're actually giving the authority of that to the board, that, the nonprofit board that we accessed. So you're going to have to give that speech again in front of that board, and should you want council reps to join with you, then we would be willing to, to have influence, but we don't have the last say. Now, we'll have the last say over macro issues, but day-to-day operational issues will be up to the, to the board members now. I will say that I'll continue to stay in contact with you or any of the other public access people and to continue to advocate on your behalf. The, the issue about a studio, that is something that I think enough of the council reps on this board were warned to that idea. Now, whether that'll be a brand-new studio or we leased one, we leased one, where we're kind of not there yet, but once again, get to know, later on, we're going to vote on who our reps are. It's, it's a lot of the OC-TAC people, actually, but, and so get to know them on a, on a regular basis. And one of the things that I'm going to ask is that, that they have an advisory committee to that board. So perhaps you may want to work in an advisory capacity. So we're, we're not doing some of the curriculum or the micromanagement today. We're just creating the framework and, and making sure that the legal aspects are, are correct. But feel free to, to come to the office, and we can talk some more.
Roll call.
This is on items 29 through 38. Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Grenat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
All adopted, seven to zero. Orders on final reading. Item number 39, orders to approve the redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement between the city and TD Ameritrade, to implement the TD Ameritrade HOTC building, tax, and financing redevelopment project plan.
The public hearing on agenda item number 39 was held on September 11th, 2012.
And there's communications opposing as well.
Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
No.
Thompson?
Uh, no.
Festerson?
Yes.
Grenat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's passed, five to two. Pursuant to city council rule 70, the public here on agenda item number 40 through 44 shall be held on third reading. Orders on second reading. Item number 45, orders to approve an agreement between the city and Lynn Vinduska for land application stabilization sewage sludge.
The public hearing on agenda item number 45 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number 46, orders authorizing the issue of purchase of Camaro water solutions for the purchase of ferric chloride to be used for odor control at the wastewater treatment plants.
Public hearing on agenda item number 46 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number 47, orders to approve the McDonald's USA tax and financing redevelopment agreement, implementing the McDonald's USA increment, tax increment financing redevelopment project plan for the rehabilitation, redevelopment of the site located at 2410 Coming.
Public hearing on agenda item number 47 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Ken Johnson, City Planning Department. The project before you is the agreement to implement the McDonald's plan as approved by the council. The funds will be used to offset the cost of dedication of right-of-way and of public signage being installed at the site. The TIF funds will be used strictly for infrastructure improvements and as offset to the cost of the right-of-way dedication. Respond to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ken. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number 49, orders to establish a new Class B flammable liquid storage district.
Forty-eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, 48. Orders to approve a redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement with Victory Apartments, to implement the Victory Apartment tax and financing redevelopment project plan at the site located at 825 Dorcas Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 48 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number 49, orders to establish new Class B flammable liquid storage district, B177 at 18020 Burt Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 49 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number 50, orders to amend sections 43272 and 43278 to delay the effective date of the contractor's license requirements to December 31st to reduce the fee for grandfather applications by small and emerging small businesses, and there will be an amendment of the whole.
Public hearing on agenda item number 50 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. As far as the, the amendment is concerned, the amendment does away with the grandfather ordinance, grandfather clause, moving it to December because what we were able to work out with, with Jay was that the licensing process for small and emerging businesses, the, the fee is going to be reduced. For those who are in the Class D and E categories, which most of the small emerging businesses fall within, there, there's going to be a waiver of, well, not necessarily in D, but in E... fall within, there's going to be a waiver of, well, not necessarily in D, but in E, there's going to be a waiver of the necessity for getting a license. They will get a provisional license, and they will work for a year, and if there are no problems, then they will get, then they will get a regular license after that year. And they're still required to take the licensing test. But that test, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Cunningham, but that test, there are various tests that, for Class A, B, C, D, and A, B, A, B, C, D, and D, and they're all, they're all different types of tests, as I understand it.
Rick Cunningham, Planning Department. Indeed, there are different tests for each of the classes. The way the Amendment of the Whole is written, however, we have said that an exam, an exam shall not be required for an applicant of the Class E license.
Correct.
So we've gone further to say the Class E licensee applicant would not need to take the Class E license. There is one, but there, under this amendment, they would not be required to take that exam.
Yes. So with that and any other, I mean, any questions? Because I know, Tom, you had a concern about the D license. If you wanted to come up for a second and identify yourself, Tom, just very quickly.
Yes, I'm Tom Lang, contractor of Development Services. We work for the city of Omaha's Tier One, Tier Two, ESB, SB program for small and emerging businesses, and we would like to consideration that the license, D license also be considered, amended or clarify it so that it is a non-structural residential remodeling contractor. Therefore, it would be unnecessary to have an exam, because most of this work would be drywall, painting, acoustical, minor carpentry, items like that. So it would open the door for small contractors in the ESB Tier One, Tier Two, ESB field that are normally only have one or two employees working for them. So I would like to have a consideration that D also be considered as E not requiring an exam.
Or portions of D?
Or, well, it's gonna be all of them.
All of D, okay.
But it would be clarified, and that would be non-structural residential remodeling construction.
Let me talk with our folks about that, but we'll get back to you on that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Cunningham, I thought this is exactly why we passed the ordinance for contractor licensing, is because we were concerned, the city was concerned that we had people out there that were doing this type of work, but they couldn't be, I don't know, for a better word, trusted, or that we had problems with, with the construction work that, that people were doing. And so now, what I'm hearing is, is that we'd be able to give somebody a permit, they'll be able to do the work, and if after a year there is no problems, what happens if there's problems? Is the city gonna be liable for some of the work that these people are doing?
Under the provisions of this Amendment of the Whole, that would all be on a Class E, and there would be a provisional license, at which time we would be scrutinizing their, their work, that they're drawing necessary permits and so forth. If they then did not, then we could basically remove the license and their ability to draw permits in the city of Omaha. You are correct, the premise of the entire ordinance was to create some minimum requirements or playing field for, for knowledge of, especially codes, and they will, and the use, using the codes and implementing the codes in the city of Omaha by contractors on work required that requires drawing a permit. And so you are correct from that premise, we thought the best upon working with Councilman Gray, that with Class E, with a provisional license category, continuing education required, just like any other class, that, that we could then monitor and manage that class by itself. We, we did, we do not support, as a department, going any higher than any, any other classes for that provisional license.
Because an E license would be work, for an example, replacing someone's roof. Is that correct?
Roofs, windows, doors, siding, decks.
So if, if we had a contractor that, he came down and got a, got a license, we don't really know if he's qualified or not, and if there's a problem with the roofing job, then what's, what have we accomplished?
Well, one, if they, if they have a problem, then, and we indicate that they can no longer draw permits, theoretically, they could not work in the city doing roofing work.
But what about the poor person that just had their roof replaced? I mean, I, I guess I'm, I'm at loss. I guess I'm not convinced that this is the right thing.
I think that we can still have that same problem, even with them taking the exam and getting a license, and the whole idea is that, if they...
But at least we have some fallback, as far as the city is concerned, we have some fallback that this person passed a test.
To the extent that they know the code and know how to apply the code, yes, sir. As far as the quality of workmanship and that, that kind of thing, we still would be involved in enforcement. And unfortunately, some of that comes from, you've gotta make that mistake before we enforce you. I mean, and I think, you know, that's kind of the way we're coming down on this, this Class E part. It would happen anyway. But the other part that we're indicating that would help us in this is that we do require all the classes to have minimum continuing education to renew, and we will be basically on some of those hours, if you remember, some of the twelve hours required, we will be providing that, those hours of continuing education. And the concept behind what we will be providing is local code issues, changes in the code, changing in building materials and so forth there in the city of Omaha, and applicability to the city of Omaha. So we would, we being the planning department, our building and development group, would be working with all contractors to keep them informed and up to, up to speed from our perspective. So we, we thought that the, the risk at Class E, at E was, was manageable at this point.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. Mr. Gray, I just want to make sure I was clear on one thing.
Yes.
The request from Tom was, is it that all of D doesn't take the test, or only the non-structural remodeling contractors not take?
The way D is, that's gonna be a real hard one to do, because all of D has a certain level of testing, and you don't extrapolate certain parts of it out. So that's gonna be a challenge, and I'm not sure we can do it. I just wanted him to have it on the record. But I'm not, I'm not sure that we can go that far.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Stothard?
Yes, I wanted to make a comment about the D with the remodeling, too, because, you know, when we first were talking about this ordinance and the home builders brought it forward to us, one of the examples they always gave was some of the remodelers come in and they'll, they're gonna remodel a basement, and they may want to take a support beam out, and they don't understand the code. And, and this was something that they brought into why it's important for them to take the test and understand. So I have, I really have hesitation with adding D in there. But I did want to ask Mr. Cunningham, as far as E with the roofs and the decks, I would think also with that, especially roofs and decks, because decks could be very dangerous, that those are a real structural issue when you're building a home, and it would be really important to understand the code. Do you agree?
Rick Cunningham, Planning Department. I totally agree, and I think in this morning session, I indicated my personal, professional philosophy, especially on roofs, is that probably there are two key systems in a building, house or otherwise, and the roof is number one, the mechanical systems are number two. Make sure you get those right, and that you have a better chance of having a good building. But I think, again, that having looked at it and thinking about it and talking with Jay, we think that we can manage it under E. I do agree that taking it to D would, would not be something that we think we would advise.
I'm kind of surprised that roofs are, are bunched in the same as painting and windows.
That, that's how they are, they're classified with the ICC and how the tests are pulled together and the licensing is pulled together, so.
Okay.
You know, we could have separated roofs out, but we decided when we put the initial ordinance together to put that in as one, one class. We could have not even licensed, in some jurisdictions, they don't license those, those categories at all, and, and we did have some discussion, pretty, pretty long discussion of whether we wanted to license that, that category. And the reason we do want to license, even if it's provisional or not, those categories is just for the reason that I mentioned. Roofs are important, and, and decks are important. People can get injured by decks that are improperly constructed. So we still require the permits for those issues, and we still believe that we should license. The question is whether or not, whether they need to take an exam for, for those or not, and we think that we can manage it otherwise.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I think most of my questions have been, have been asked now, but just a couple follow-ups. I also don't think I'd be supportive of applying this to D for the reasons that have been already discussed here. And originally, I was opposed to the grandfather concept at all when we had this first come up. I guess it's been about a year now, maybe longer ago. But I think what won the day, and eventually I supported, was the need for grandfather just for this particular reason, the small emerging business and the smaller-type jobs we're talking about with E. So I guess for Mr. Gray or Mr. Cunningham, now I think what we're saying is, well, we're gonna remove grandfather for those kind of smaller jobs and for small emerging businesses and reduce that fee, because that fee has been burdensome. Is that the accurate description?
Yeah, part of the reason, we didn't want to, in discussions with, with Mr. Cunningham, he didn't want to extend the grandfather period. But what we were trying to do in that area was reduce some of the costs that emerging small business, small emerging businesses would have. And through this amendment, it reduces some of the costs. So the necessity for having a grandfather clause or extending the grandfather clause doesn't exist.
And there was some concern about the testing at the time. And, Mr. Cunningham, isn't it right that under the current ordinance, one can be grandfathered if they pay the fee, but the planning department would have ongoing contact and conversations with them before doing that to ensure you had a comfort level about their workmanship and track record and, and all those things before letting them proceed, right?
Rick Cunningham, Planning Department. Indeed, and the ordinance is on the books right now, spells out that process, at least in a conceptual level, paying the fee and applying for grandfather's clause. We would then undertake a process of evaluation of the data that was presented in that application required by the, the different classes. We would then also look at the record of the company based on their pulling permits and having any issues with code violations, et cetera. And then we would have a face-to-face interview based on all of that evaluation, and then make a determination based on all of that process. We, as a point of fact, we have seven or eight applications for grandfathering that are, that we are beginning to process that were, you know, submitted before the deadline of September the first, two thousand and twelve.
Okay. Now, under this new system where there would be, no, no longer be a grandfather and a reduced fee, would you still have some kind of similar interaction to have that comfort level, even though these are smaller-type jobs?
On the Class E?
Yeah.
I'm sure we'll look at those applications for that provisional level, but it will not be at the level of, of the grandfather clause at all, at all.
Okay, but there'd be some, some level of comfort there for the department?
Our level of comfort is the provisional nature of the license, which basically indicates that, again, that if you do not pull a permit when you're supposed to pull a permit, or you have a problem with a job not meeting code requirements, that we can yank your license, and then you'll have to go through the process. So that's our level of comfort, that we will be able to manage it from that perspective.
Okay.
My only concern is that we do have E-class contractors who have been licensed under the code, and, and they may feel that, that they had to take the test and, and get the license that way. The only thing is that the cost will, will be the same, basically, as I think I pointed out to Councilman Gray. The cost of the test is a hundred dollars. The cost of our provisional license application is a hundred dollars. So it basically will, will have cost the same amount of money, two hundred dollars total to get that first three, three-year license.
Okay, that's all I have for now. Thanks.
I guess I'll just use the final analogy. I hope we don't start giving out provisional driver's license and, and wait to see if anybody has a problem after a year, and then we'll revisit the situation. I mean, it's, to me, this just doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. It sounds like we've got a situation where people don't like to take a test, and I understand that, nobody likes to take a test, but I, but I think this is just, use the analogy of a driver's license, I mean, you still have to take a test before you're given out a driver's license. We don't give out provisional licenses and hope that you don't have a problem within a year, and then, and then we'll respond accordingly. So that's all. Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Pursuant to City Council Rule Seventy, the public hearing on agenda item fifty-one shall be held on third reading. Pursuant to City Council Rule Seventy, the public hearing on agenda item numbers, numbers fifty-two through fifty-six shall be held on the second reading.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Jerem? Yes. Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President? Allo of people stay for a long time, but, oh, I'm sorry. Three oh five. Not every test.